Hey, um, yeah, thanks, Mike. Hey, folks online. Kara, do I have the proper version of your PowerPoint? I'm not sure if you want to... Can you guys hear me? Am I just making up stuff?
Oh, no, I muted.
Oh.
I muted it.
Oh, good, that's good.
I don't have people in here.
No, sorry. Friends online. Kara? I think I need the... Do I need the PowerPoint version of your PowerPoint? I have the... Um, I believe I have the PDF. I'm sorry, I was on the road today and I... If you sent it to me today, I might have missed it. I got the PDF from a couple of days ago.
Oh, no problem. I wasn't aware I needed to send that to you. I will get it to you right now, Kara.
Oh, no, actually Kara, maybe that's okay, actually. Um, who's here? Sherry? I think we can let the staff just... They're both online now, so... Both of the staff members that'll be presenting today, they can just... They can control their own lives, right? I don't have to worry about it?
Yes, I will make them a co-host to present.
There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna call the Common Council Executive Committee Meeting of October 3rd to order and ask staff to call the roll, please.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figaro Cole? Alder Vediver?
Here.
Alder Madison? Aldo Govindarajan is, I believe, excused. Alder Conklin? Alder Evers? Alder Bennett?
Here.
And Alder Bennett, while you... While Aldo Govindarajan's not here, I think then it means you're voting. Yeah. You have quorum.
Thank you. Uh, that'll take us into approval of minutes of our last meeting of September 19th. Who I have in motion? Motion to approve by Alder Madison. Do I have a second? Second by Alder Conklin, thank you. Draft minutes of September 19th meeting are approved. Uh, if there's no objection to... I will assume unanimous consent. Alright, those are approved. Just looked at the Regents' Report. We have no one registered for public comment, so that moves us into disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Seeing and hearing none. Let's move us into our agenda. Agenda item two, Legislative File 80131, overview of seven elements of a great city and performance excellence. And we have Kara Cradwitz joining us virtually. Go ahead, Kara.
Thank you and good evening. I am joining you all today from Madison Metro, where I was taking some meetings this afternoon and look forward to giving you an update on something that I will just name as a very complex subject matter area. And I hope that you consider inviting me back in the future for further dialogue on anything that we don't have time to dig into as deeply as you may want today. So for those of you who do not know me, my name is Carolyn Cradwitz. I go by Kara. I use she/her pronouns. And I am the Performance Excellence Specialist within Human Resources Organizational Development. And I am talking to you tonight about a bit on the background of performance excellence and on the elements of a great city. So first, I'll cover that background on what is performance excellence. We'll talk about the seven elements in high overview and a number of use cases that I think you all might find relevant to your work here on council. I'll leave you with a couple of next steps that I'm working on and happy to take any questions in the time we may have. Alright, so a little bit on background. So, performance excellence is a big fancy buzzword that the National Institutes for Standards and Technology uses for what they consider as their Baldridge Excellence Framework. And so Baldridge Excellence has seven components that systematically designed around an emphasis on measurement, analysis, and knowledge management. As a core to all of that, there are six other components that we think of. So every one of these other six components has a measurement aspect to them. And so when we think about leadership, we're really talking about the values-based leadership framework of the city that teaches staff at every level of Team City to become leaders. Within the strategy component, we're talking about all the city plans. That could be anything from the mayor's forward agendas to Imagine Madison, to Vision Zero, you name it. When we talk about customers, this is really the external input we get from the public and within our community, whether that's report a problem or individual agencies doing service-level review or getting input from boards, committees, and commissions. When we talk about workforce, this is really our efforts to ensure engagement within all of Team City. We check progress on that through the MACWIC survey, the Employee Voice Survey, and our Pulse surveys ongoing. When we talk about operations, this is how we continuously improve everything we do at the city of Madison. So I basically consult across our 30 different agencies on how can we improve our service delivery regularly to make things more equitable and sustainable for the public. Um, and then having that results orientation, how are we showing progress on all areas of this framework and talking to you regularly about the progress that we're making? So, the seven aspects of that framework is how I think about my job. Now, when I communicate out to the workforce and when I typically come to you, I simplify it. And I really talk about it in these four broad category areas that we like to distill for the average Team City member who may not want to remember all seven of those components that I help oversee. So we really talk about this as having an engaged public who understands what this work of the city of Madison is, an engaged workforce who is ready and able to do the jobs for the city of Madison, having strong operations where people come to work and know what they need to do every day to get the work done on behalf of the city of Madison, and using our resources effectively so we're fiscally efficient and responsible with the resources that are allocated to us through taxpayer dollars. Um, I just want to ground you in the fact that performance excellence was really adopted by the Common Council in July of 2018. So we're still a relatively new effort of the city, even though the quality improvement efforts of the city date back to the 80s. The resolution linked here on the PowerPoint slides, which are attached in your Legisar file, establishes the city of Madison's Performance Excellence Framework and implementation and ongoing sustainability efforts. I will name the first big work product coming out of this performance excellence was the reimagining of our vision, mission, values, and service promise. So centering us in that, our Madison inclusive, innovative, and thriving vision with our mission to provide the highest-quality service delivery in alignment with those National Institutes for Standards and Technology goals, living our values of equity, civic engagement, well-being, shared prosperity, and stewardship. We also, through this framework, adopted the seven elements of a great city as our organizing framework, which I'll get into in a moment. And at the time, when it was adopted in 2018, the council wanted the Performance Excellence Specialists coming quarterly through the December of 2020. And so regularly, there were record ops made to council from Performance Excellence on the vast array of activities that are happening under this service area. So, again, happy to come back and talk to you at any point in time about anything in that framework. But I note today, your primary goal was to understand more about the seven elements of a great city and the use cases as they are currently in practice and working on. So, for those of you who are not familiar with the seven elements of Madison, of a great city... So, what we talk about when we say this, like, when I distill down the seven elements, this is a way that we can further describe our vision. So when we say "our Madison inclusive, innovative, and thriving", we need to be able to break down our vision in a way that encompasses all of the services we provide. And the elements provide those high, broad-level priority areas that were identified by feedback from residents in the comprehensive plan through community outreach and engagement in that first plan process in 2018. There was also significant engagement from city managers, staff, and the Common Council at the time. So those seven elements include culture and character, effective government, economy and opportunity, green and resilient, health and safety, neighborhoods and housing, and land use and transportation. Some of you who are intimately familiar with the Imagine Madison Comprehensive Plan may realize that health and safety was not a feature of the original plan as adopted in 2018. However, through significant outreach and efforts with the University Alliance, which is a collaboration to bridge partnerships with the city of Madison into the University of Wisconsin-Madison, we worked with an advanced standing student who was a member of the Public Safety Review Committee at the time to review all of the public testimony that was coming in through public channels during the 2020 response to the murder of George Floyd and the police chief search that was happening at the time to propose a list of strategies and actions that could be complementary to the Imagine Madison Plan. And that was thus since adopted by the Common Council. And so for each of the seven elements, we now have a set of goals, strategies, and actions for each of the elements of a great city. And we use this as a guidepost for what we are working on here within the city of Madison. I know this is a really small screenshot, but I wanted you to get a flavor of the part of the plan that I'm directing you to for the Quick Reference Guide, which is Appendix A. Within Appendix A, you'll see this, what I like to call a little cheat sheet of all of the strategies and actions that the city are working on with the lead agencies tied to them. There's also a Legisar file that I'll follow up with after this for the health and safety element that you can also find to have the complimentary list. But what we're looking at here is economy and opportunity. So, economy and opportunity has two goals. Madison will have a growing diversified economy that offers an opportunity for businesses and residents to prosper. And Madison will have equitable education and advancement opportunities that meet the needs of each resident. These goals are those broad, high-level outcomes that we want to see happening in our community over the course of the next 20 years, which is the duration of the Imagine Madison Comprehensive Plan. In order to achieve those goals, we have eight strategies here. I'm not going to read each strategy and action, but those strategies generally look at employers and having a supply of sites to grow employers, having families supporting minimum wages, closing the educational opportunity gap, looking at economic sustainability, and having small business outreach and initiatives to support our community. So all of these strategies within the economy and opportunity element are being actively worked on. And you receive updates about them annually through the Comp Plan Progress Updates that planning provides you. So, um, after the close of this year, you will receive the 2023 report, which will tell you what has been worked on across the city in these elements of a great city. So, knowing that that was just one slice of an example for an economy and opportunity to keep this at a high level so that we can have a conversation today, I wanted to provide you with a couple of use cases with how these elements are being applied organizationally. So, within our organization, we are working towards a results-based accountability model. So I've been with the city for eight years now. And when I started, I was in the Finance Department as the Data Projects Coordinator, which was a position created out of the Racial Equity and Social Justice Initiative, working to transform our budget process to an outcome focus. And we were a flagship member of the Local Government Alliance on Race and Equity, also NARDA-GARE. And at the time, they published this report called "Racial Equity Getting to Results", and we were a featured city that was interviewed as part of this process, given what we were working on. Results-based accountability is really a framework for population-level accountability. So it starts with the N in mind. And so some of the questions that are core to results-based accountability are what do the desired results we're working towards look like? What are those desired results? What are the ways we're going to measure that desired result with an indicator? What does the data tell us when we start measuring it? Who are our partners in the community who are going to help us move the needle on the things we say we care about and that we're about at this population level? What do we know that works to change the data toward the trend that we want to get behind? And what actions should we start with? This guide is being used nationally and is something that we are still actively working on building out here in the city of Madison through our Results Madison and Budgeting Framework. So when we talk about Results Madison, this is really a framework that is helping transform the budget process to that outcome focus. And we start with those elements of a great city at the highest level. And we cascade down from each element a set of goal outcomes. So on this slide, you're going to see an example from the economy and opportunity list of strategies and actions that I had shared just a moment ago. So if we follow the logic that economy and opportunity is the element we're speaking to here, and each element has two goal outcomes, and I've read through the two before, but for example, the goal outcomes are going to describe what we want to see happening for each element. So Madison will have a growing diversified economy that offers opportunity for businesses and residents to prosper. Each of those goal outcomes could be measured by a citywide indicator that could help us measure progress against each element's goal area. We do not have goal indicators... Or, sorry, citywide indicators defined at this point in time, but for example, I put in a measure that we could be thinking about, which would be median household income disaggregated by demographics and looked at geographically across the city. So, once you have the goal outcome in mind and the citywide indicator that we're trying to move the needle on, we can then start thinking about those strategies that are explicitly listed in the comprehensive plan. And those strategies are what agencies are individually or together working on to help achieve the city's desired goal outcomes. So, an example of a strategy that we are working on here at the city is increasing the number and diversity of street vendors citywide. And I will call out that, within the Imagine Madison Comprehensive Plan, we don't touch on every single strategy we're working on. It's pretty much a big roll-up of the most priority things the community said they wanted us to be working on in the coming decade in alignment with the Comp Plan. But with that strategy, it's being delivered by a city service. And you hear this word a lot in the budget context. And our services are a discrete set of activities each agency provides on behalf of the city residents, which are means to achieve the goal outcomes. So in the case of street vending, as you may know, this sits within our Economic Development Division and within the Street Fending and Sidewalk Cafe program, which is one of the new services we will be working towards with Results Madison in our redesign of the chart of accounts. For each of our services, what we're also working on with Results Madison is designing a set of service indicators to help gauge how well each service is performing. So at times, you're going to start seeing the budget book as we start moving through the organization. Streets and Library went first. And each agency is developing a set of indicators that can help tell you how much we're doing with each service, how well we're doing with each service, and whether or not anyone in our community is better off as a result of the services that we provide. So that results-based accountability here locally, that model, we're calling Results Madison. And it's helping us move the needle on our budget process, working towards that outcome focus with the seven elements of the great city as the top-level organizing tool. One other way we can think about using the seven elements of a great city is for collective impact and organizing. Now, I'm familiar with this term from prior work experience in my training as a macro-level social worker. So if you're not familiar with collective impact, collective impact is a network of community members, organizations, and institutions to advance equity by learning together, aligning, and integrating their actions to achieve population and systems-level change. So I give you two examples of where this is happening. And that would be OutcomeStat happening in the city of Baltimore, um, which is very similar to the stat-based performance models you may have heard happening in police departments over the years. But they're really looking at population-level data like we're talking about with the elements of a great city. They're organizing key stakeholders around the committee to coalesce around a set of data points for each of what would be comparable to our elements. And they're having dialogues about what's happening for what is comparable to each of our elements. And what does the data look like? Not only what does government data look like, but what do our partner organizations look like? If we're talking about median household income disaggregated by race, the city is not the only actor alone who would move the needle on something like that. So, city of Baltimore has said, "Who wants to raise their hand to sit at the table with us and have a dialogue about how we could move the needle on this in the coming decade?" And then have regular dialogue about the actions we're each taking to help support our community in doing so. Locally here in Wisconsin, the model that I helped stand up at the state of Wisconsin is around children's mental health. And that model is actively being worked on and has survived a number of administrations. And I just want to call it the key components of collective impact, because I think that this is what could be supportive of our board, committee, commission reorg process, is potentially considering our boards, committees, and commissions in alignment with the elements to be a collective impact and organizing tool. Um, and so the key components of a collective impact model are having a common agenda that keeps all parties moving towards the same goals. So if you were to reorganize BCCs around elements, each of those elements has a clear set of strategies and actions. And you would have a clear set of goals that each of the BCCs would be contributing towards with a clear aim of achieving results in our community. Another key component to a collective impact framework is a common measurement system. So each of the elements would have to have that population-level measure that we would be working towards within the community. As I mentioned, those have not been decided here in Madison, but other municipalities have chosen those hard-to-move, really difficult community-level measures that government alone is not the only actor on and have started coalescing data around that in community conversation. The third key component is having mutually reinforcing activities that leverage the expertise of each party involved. So like OutcomeStat in Baltimore, when they invite, you know, partners to the table from local workforce development organizations or key business partners, each of those business partners or workforce development organizations are going to have their own indicators that they're tracking and want to bring their data to the table as well. And the activities are coordinated then in connotation to move towards the results that we want to achieve. Um, within the key components of collective impact then are also having continuous communications across all parties to allow for continuous collaboration. And I think the most difficult one to consider here is the backbone organization, which takes on the role of managing any collaboration. And that may not be the role of government, but cities like Baltimore are taking a stab at seeing what it could be like to be in that role of convening the dialogue around something that's difficult to move as an indicator within our community. So, that's a little bit of a lot on elements and use. And I'm going to come back to anything you want to talk about, but I'm just going to tell you a few points on my next steps. And this is my last slide. Where we're heading right now with performance excellence is working towards a three-year plan that we will be creating yet this year. Some key highlights from that plan, I think you all will be interested in hearing more about ongoing into the future, is the Work with the Voice of the Customer, which is how we hear about our service delivery from the community and how we hear about work planning from our agencies. And so, it's really a goal of Results Madison to get into a routine of work planning that doesn't just happen after the budget adopts, but that we're using the work plans as an input to the budget process. I'm also personally consulting on a couple of projects that I think you will be curious to hear about ongoing, which is the Change Management for Results Madison, which is that results-based accountability framework that I mentioned before. Each of our agencies are going through data engagement led by the Finance Data Team. And I consult on that for change management purposes. And together, we are designing a data convening format that we will prototype in 2024 to start talking about how we use the data we collect and visualize to move the progress on data that we want to see have different outcomes. And then I also am working between council office and mayor's office on the BCC change management regarding onboarding and reorganization. So, um, I leave you with my contact information and encourage you to ask questions now, later, or whenever you feel the bug to get in touch with me. I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you so much, Kara. Are there questions, comments from the body? Alder Vediver?
Hi Kara, thanks very much for that. As someone who is certified in results-based accountability, I'm super excited to see that this is starting to get implemented. Can you tell me about kind of what the city is doing to educate staff about these and build that collective capacity of staff to shift thinking in this manner?
Yeah, great question. So we just got our first opportunity to present out a citywide communication on what is Results Madison. And that just went out a few weeks ago. And so I will say, I started using the words "Results Madison" when I was in the Finance Department. And I've been out of finance since 2019. So this is not a fledgling concept in my world, but I wouldn't say the average employee at the city of Madison can articulate the work that I'm doing. We did stand up an employee net page, which is our internal facing website that we have information about Results Madison. And we're working to update that with clearer timelines. Um, we are also working through the data engagement process as the primary mechanism that staff are hearing about Results Madison. But not every single staff gets involved in designing what are the key measures that will be used as service indicators for you all to intake and for leadership to intake when making decisions about services at the city. So, you can think about this as like a little funnel. And all city email users are currently receiving communications about Results Madison, but we've just begun that journey. And then there's a smaller funnel of folks who are involved in data engagements, who are hearing about what this is and how the the data will be used. And then there will be a subset who next year started getting involved in the data convening conversation. And we continue to want to replicate that cycle of giving more people having routine communications about this, how to getting involved in processes and then actually working with the data to drive decision making.
And then, um, has the city purchased a clear impact license? And if so, how many users are there?
No, great question. We used to through Gare have one license at the city. And that was complimentary with our membership. I don't think they maintain that partnership, but I'd have to double check with the Gare. But it was only me who was playing around in there. And as you know, it's very difficult if you don't have a team of folks. And we need those population level measures first before using a tool like that would be really advantageous for our organization.
Thank you, Alder Bennett.
Hi Cara, you uh, are awesome. And I, I um, really appreciate how you in the past, you and like staff in the past has partnered with the UW for these processes. As you know, I was once in a class where you were there. So, um, could you tell us a bit more about how you will um, use partnerships with uh, the UW for this?
Yeah, thank you, Alder Bennett. I appreciate that nudge. Um, another way we're continually partnering, actually, Jessica Price and I will be going to Professor Yangheng Deng's class in um, urban and regional economics tomorrow to teach the same class we taught last year to Alder Bennett and her colleagues. And then we, this is the third year in a row we've been teaching this class in urban and regional economics. And basically what we do is we introduce the comp plan. We introduce a number of other city plans, including the mayor's forward agendas, vision zero and complete green streets, along with the connect Madison economic development strategy. And we pose questions around um, equity and sustainability, asking students, how could we continuously improve the ways we think about our plans? In order to continually receive feedback from a unique audience who's ripe to give us feedback because they're researching these topics and have the time to dedicate to this. So this is the third semester in a row. There'll be a poster session in December. I would love to circulate that to folks if they'd be interested in attending. Um, we plan to do it for a fourth year next year already. He's already asked us and I've already reserved a room in city hall for it because it takes that long to book a space. Um, but we will be working again for the next couple of fall's terms on um, continuously getting feedback from the student body about how we could be improving our city plans with that equity and sustainability lens. We do not look at the elements of culture and character or effective government in that class, but we do supplement with a number of other city plans and then we culminate in a poster session at the end of the semester. There may be other opportunities to continue collaborating with Professor Lori Dupree Brown, who has done um, sustainable development goals focused in her areas of research. And what we've done in the past there as well was done what she calls SDG 360 thinking. And the UN Sustainable Development Goals are basically a macro prism of what we're doing locally here with the elements of the great city. So we actually had a number of students who crosswalked the seven elements of a great city to the 17 UN Sustainable Development Goals. And if anyone's interested in seeing that report, I have visual graphics that tell us which UN element, which UN Sustainable Development Goals do our seven elements crosswalk to. So you basically can tell the story of like a local to global connection of how our framework sits within the international context.
That's amazing. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Alder Bennett and Cara. Alder Bennett, did you have another question?
No, sorry.
Uh, Vice President Figaro Cole.
Thank you, um, Cher. Cara, thank you so much for this presentation. We have been, I think, I mean, at least for the past three years, but what people way before me have been struggling on how to tackle the BCCs. And we really are, um, we have made a commitment to really try to make a dent on that process. And we have been trying so many aspects on how many, many, many different ideas on how to to get this going. And I don't remember who brought this up, but I think, um, listening to this presentation and looking at the list, um, the appendix of each of the elements descriptions, it definitely reinforces the idea that this is the way to go when we are um, combining BCCs. So I mean, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, but based on, on, on the goals of each of these elements, we could easily tackle each BCC and compare and see if those goals are included on the, on those um, committees. And if they are, you know, it really should help us identify what we really need. I, I am pretty certain based on the research that I don't already that we have BCCs that are not meeting any of these criterias already, or that are probably not on the same route. So do you have, I mean, I hear that you're working with the um, mayor's office and so are we. Do you have any words of advice, any additional feedback on how um, relevant or not, you feel are, um, we can make these um, elements be the center and the core of every of our committees?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. And this is my um, practitioner advice, right? So I think that if you could, if you could idealistically imagine a place where there were seven super committees, for lack of a better word, that are aligned to the seven elements of a great city. And you probably need a number of other committees that are statutorily required, but may very well align with multiple elements. And there, the work of those, those statutorily required committees would best practice be told which elements are you aligning with when, when you're working and making your decision? So when I think about creating a streamlined BCC process, it's in order to create that collective impact and organizing model for the results based accountability to really take flight so that if you're trying to recruit someone in your district to become part of a BCC, it's an easier sell to say, we have seven elements of a great city. Each has two goals and here's the population level measure we are trying to move the needle on. Do you want to help us do this? And there's a very clear sell point for someone in our community to get simply understood about the work of government in a way that's going to grow increasingly complex as they sit within their board committee or commission. You may have like a nesting doll situation where the element becomes the super committee where alders sit. But you may have smaller subcommittees that break out under each element that help meet the needs of the existing BCC structure to remain, but still get aligned with something at a higher level. I do see this as the best practice that is resonant with the results based accountability model um, that Alder Vitter had mentioned her expertise in as well, and seeing that alignment is key for our organization to move forward. And I don't know that we've had a ripe enough counsel um, to understand all of the things I do and what I've been sharing, because I've seen this vision since we adopted the plan. But it's taken me this five years to get staff to understand what my vision is as a practitioner, having worked in collective impact at the state level previously.
Thank you so much. I mean, like, I, I mean, I'm a visual person. I'm just, I'm listening to you speak and I'm already looking at the flow charts and all the organization charts going in my brain. So, um, I'm so glad that you're working with the with the um, mayor's office so, and that we can, as well as we are, so makes me feel a little bit better of tackling the, the issue in front of us with the, with the community alignments. Um, and it gives me, I don't know, a little bit of the light at the end of the tunnel. I know that we are not going to be able to resolve the entire, the entire situation in, in the next six months, but we really want to be able to create a framework that is needed to accomplish this for as long as it takes. But we really need, we don't, we don't have um, a clarity on those building steps. And this is why we are, we have you here today, because we feel that this is the route to go. And so I, I am super excited now to really continue to, to participate on the, on this process. So thank you again for the presentation. I will make sure that this is on my blog and I suggest anyone from the CCEC to share it on their blogs too. And, you know, invite the community to see what the elements are and, and, and maybe even share with the, with some of the staff from the different committees. So they also understand where we, we are going. So thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'm here for your change management needs through that journey.
Thank you both. Um, not seeing any other hands raised. And that will move us on. Thank you, Cara, so much for your time and presenting. And um, I did hear you say several times about coming back, so we will be reaching out. All right, that takes us to agenda item three legislative file seven, four, five, seven, two, which is our Alder's social media policy. And we have our community strategist, Larissa, joining us virtually. And it's also her birthday. Happy birthday, Larissa.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, it's my pleasure to be here. I'll go ahead and share my screen. All right, yeah. So my name is Larissa Banuelos. I am the um, community engagement strategist for the common council office. And one of the things that I've been working on is um, implementing the social, the phase one of the social media pilot draft. Um, that was uh, created by TFOGS um, in 2020. So this is my report out and then um, my recommended next steps for implementation of phase two. So I will start with a brief reminder of the origin of this um, pilot. Um, and then the goals of the pilot program and its phase one. Um, and then pilot process and review. So what, basically what I've been doing for the last eight months and then key takeaways. Um, and then I will touch on again of the benefits of official district page slash account versus personal. Um, and then the goals of phase two and then um, my recommended action um, items and next steps. So again, this is a, um, this is a recommendation from the um, TFOGS report. Um, and this was to adopt the draft um, social media policy that was created by a team of people. Um, and the, and then so the, and the individuals who are participating in this would, would have had to adhere to the rules and guidelines outdated in that draft policy. So the goal of this phase one was to gather data to be able to recommend next steps for implementation of a full Alder social media account program. So this um, this only included Facebook and Twitter. Um, and uh, so, and then this gave me an opportunity to test program materials and make revisions. Um, gather information about the amount of staff time needed to support this program. And then determine whether to conduct an additional pilot phase before recommending full implementation. So this is the pilot process and review. Uh, the alders involved were district three alders, so former alder Eric Carlson and then current alder Derek Field. The length was eight months. So, um, so that, so it did go over, um, it did go over an election. Um, but I was able to um, recruit Derek to participate um, uh, since, since April. And then these were the materials and resources provided for implementation of the pilot. Obviously, the um, draft, the, the common council sort of social media policy phase one draft. Um, and then we did, I did, so both alders decided to choose Facebook over Twitter. Um, and then uh, I did create a common council social media strategy. I also created um, a strategy for alders to fill out. Um, and then I did have um, scheduling templates such as a shared content calendar. And then I was checking in with Eric and Derek on how, um, how their, um, this process was going for them. Key takeaways, um, so the draft policy obviously does not contain enough detail. It was a high level overview and I think um, we knew that from the beginning. So, um, what I would like to do is put a, put more processes in place as far as what alders do when it comes to um, open meetings law, how to navigate their social media when it comes to um, public records. Um, and then what processes to take if someone um, violates the city commons policy. So getting very detailed processes together for alders so they can navigate the legal dimensions of social media. And, and then again, so building out that structure, so um, creating those materials. Um, and yeah. So the benefit, the benefits of official district page versus personal, so this allows your personal pages accounts to be personal. Um, social media, like I said before, social media has legal dimensions and it's our goal to help alders navigate their outward communications as an elected official. Our plan is to develop additional training and resources for alders to better manage official city Madison social media slash alder district pages and accounts. Um, and then another benefit is council can assist in the management of their official district social media. We cannot assist um, with the management of your personal and campaign accounts. And then also keep in mind, if you are doing district um, alder business on your personal pages, um, that is considered a public forum. Um, and so, um, again, that, that's another legal dimension that alders have to um, have to navigate when operating. Another benefit is accessibility. So social media reaches um, a larger and diverse, diverse crowd. Um, in my previous, um, in my previous uh, presentation, um, one in seven adults use social media. So it, you're really, if you're not utilizing social media to get um, council business out, um, to get out to the public, it, it, it's a missed opportunity. Um, and then I, I really do think once alders have a better understanding of um, just social media policies and um, processes. Um, or I should say, um, city, you know, city policies regarding social media, they will have a better, um, they'll, they'll be set up to um, to, to create, uh, to create resources and develop co- uh, content to provide an exclusive experience for everyone. This also contributes to a long-term district account. So um, similar to alder blogs, the social media account, account slash pages will be passed on from alder to alder. This gives the alder an opportunity to generate additional followers. Um, and then also increase reach in the district, which will ultimately improve effectiveness of the account. So, um, the goals of this phase two would be to create a structure that assists alder, alders in navigating the legal dimensions when using social media as an, in an, in an official capacity to better reach their constituents. Um, this would also give us an opportunity to review and update the council, the current council social media policy phase one draft. Um, with the goal of getting an approved um, policy by April uh, 2024. So my action items and next steps, so um, council office would have to work with the attorney's office as well as I, IT to review and update the current social media policy. Um, and then I would have to uh, develop training documents to support alders and social media, additional training documents to support alders and social media use. Um, and then I would hope to uh, report back to CCEC in March of 2024 with a proposed updated social media policy. Um, and then I will continue to assist alders with their outgoing um, communications while refining training materials. And that is it.
Thank you so much, Larissa, um, for the presentation and all the work that you've been doing on this. Are there any questions, discussion, comments? Feedback? Vice President Figaro Cole.
Okay, I, I asked a question. So do you have a lot of alders um, interested on participating on this?
Um, so I currently just worked with the district three all, uh, district three alders. Um, I can definitely gauge interest um, with some sort of survey. Um, but this really was to kind of just um, test the original social media um, policy. It's also, um, it's also to have, to create something um, at an official, um, an official account. And then if, and, and if an alder wanted to utilize it, they would have the tools and resources to utilize it.
So I guess, I mean, so are you like, are you done with the pilot? Are you confident that we, that it can be um, shared with everybody else then? If they want to? Are we ready to support that in flux of more people having an account?
So I would want to finalize more documents, um, more documents as far as, um, I'd want to finalize more documents as far as like the legal dimensions when it comes to, um, when it comes to social media, because those really don't exist any, uh, those really don't exist right now. Um, there are various policies, like a comment policies, but alders don't know what process to take it when, when they would like to, since it is a public forum, if they would like to delete, block or, um, or somehow manage, you know, when, when someone is, when someone is not being appropriate on social media. So again, that's just one little example. There's also open meeting, open meeting law, open meeting laws that there really isn't, there really isn't any information or detailed information to Alders and how it pertains to social media.
Thank you. So yeah, thank you for the presentation and I guess, yeah, whenever, I'm sure we hear back from you whenever you're ready to proceed. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Presidents. Alder Vitterver and then Alder Madison.
Yeah, I just got a question about sort of the vision for this. And what I mean by that is, right, there's some Alders who are going to be, feel super comfortable in being able to do social media on their own and others who won't. And so I guess the question is, is the vision that council staff will do some of those posts on Alders' behalfs for those people who, who aren't comfortable or don't wish to do it on their own? Or is it really just going to be if the Alder has the time and capacity to do it, they will? And if not, then they don't. And then that district doesn't get the social media updates.
Yeah, so like I said, it's very similar to current Alder blogs. You, you know, it is what you make it. Unfortunately, staff cannot post on behalf of the Alder. But we're trying with these, you know, with those social media strategy resources and tools that I'm both creating and then also, you know, providing links for Alders, like, you know, as far as to educate themselves on social media strategy. And, but I would want to create more, more materials in regards to the legal dimensions of social media. So in an effort to try and close that gap and hopefully make this, make the, to make managing an official district as accessible as possible.
Thank you. Alder Madison?
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thanks again, you know, thanks for the work, thanks for the conversations about fleshing through and talking through social media. I do want to just offer again, I very much don't mind helping folks understand or not necessarily understand, but like implement social media and utilize tools that will make it super easier, not easy, but easier to plan and like, you know, strategize for your social media. I don't, I definitely don't mind that. But I just wanted to say in the rollout, I think the, like some sort of teaching session, whomever offers it or whatever, should be included in that because some folks just don't have, you know, they're not using social media as much as everybody else, so it might be a challenge. So in the rollout, also some sort of just like hands-on, like literally side by side.
Thank you for that offer. Alder Bennett.
Thanks. Happy birthday, Larissa. And I still have a little bit of confusion about using or using different social media platforms. I know that the pilot included using Facebook, but as we've talked previously, I have interest in using Instagram, Twitter. I know, like TikTok even is really famous with the kids. So it's like, will we be able to include other social media platforms aside from Facebook in the rollout?
Yeah, so I do think that the materials will apply to those social media platforms. But the pilot that was created in 2020 only, only included Facebook and Twitter. But I really do think, you know, I, I feel like the, I, I feel like the legalities are somewhat the same as far as it being a public forum if an Alder is using it for council business. So I do think a lot of these materials will work in the same way as they will work for Facebook and Twitter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of feel like, I understand where you're coming from. I also feel like just the way social media platforms, I'm also not trying to speak in a vacuum or anything. I'm sure you use all the sites as well. Like sometimes what you would post on Facebook looks very different than what you can post on Twitter or Instagram. So, and I don't know, that's just a thought that I, I hope you can keep in mind too.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, it would, I mean, and this is something that, you know, if we get more Alders on board, this is something that we could potentially, you know, add in there. I know that you and Alder Govindarajan, you guys, you both utilize Instagram and do a great job on it. So that is definitely a possibility in the near future. As, as council staff, I was just implementing the original social media policy. But all that information can also be applied to these results as well.
I see. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands or folks, or, go ahead, Karen, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. I just wanted to clarify also, next steps, because the council approved implementation of the draft policy, then once our staff is, is done working with the attorney's office and IT to address some of the issues that Larissa found in, in the pilot, we'll bring it back to CCEC for you all to take a look. And I believe I'll be consulting with Attorney House, but I believe it'll probably go back to council as well, since it was originally approved by council. So the policy itself will at least come back to you, if not the whole council. So that will be next steps on that. Also, Larissa does have some tips and pointers for when you're using your own social media to do Alder work. So she can send that out again for your, for your reference. And she's also available for consultation on any of these issues as you're going along. So please, please feel free to reach out to her. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification and direction. And Larissa, again, thank you for your work and presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us right along to Agenda Item Four, Legislative File 75427, which are council office updates. And we'll turn it back over to our Chief of Staff.
Thank you. So this is going to be brief. I was unfortunately waylaid an extra day for travel, but I'll send this out to everyone after this meeting. A couple of things, there's some things in your email that we want to draw attention to. Health and dental insurance open enrollment information is available in your emails and also your mailboxes. If it's relevant, we also have, Liz would like, if anybody has a recent change of contact information, Alder contact information, please let her know and she'll update all of our rosters. And as you know, budget season update, the executive operating budget 2024 is now available. So I'll be providing some links to those, the budget page, the actual budget, and also the executive summary document, which is where I recommend folks who are new to budget, start to get, to get a view on that. And I will send that out. IT did send out some additional information. And so I'm putting this on everyone's radar that the blog tool won't be available between November 2nd and November 8th. And I'll, we'll keep reminding folks about this. So if you have neighborhood meetings happening during that time, plan to do some posting beforehand. And if they, if you have meetings come, you know, sort of just a heads up to plan your, your blog posting. That's at the time when they're making the really big push to finish the upgrades to, across the board to the website. And then speaking of the seven elements of the great city, CCEC members have received individualized spreadsheets for feedback with instructions. And basic, and, and I'll be sending these out to all of council as soon as I can, hopefully in the next few days. And what you'll be doing is looking at or considering the MGOs that are associated with your committees. There's links, instructions, and we can also meet with you to walk you through it. And then thinking about each of the seven elements, and there are, there are further descriptions of the seven elements available as well when I send this out to everyone else, CCEC, you should have this in your inbox. And you'll be able to identify which elements of a great city do you think your committee touches? And you'll be able to also identify, oh, this is the primary element. And then these are the secondary elements. And then there are some other places to provide more feedback, since you have a kind of a, you have a unique place. Because as Alders, you're on several committees, you know, whereas, you know, resident members may be on one committee, right? So you all have a good vantage point to think about things like meaningful overlap, redundancy, coverage, whether, whether your committees are, you know, covering their MGO, whether that's being done in another one of your committees. And so CCEC, if, as you remember, thought it would be really valuable for the whole council to have a chance to weigh in on this as, as staff is coming up with recommendations for streamlining the BCCs. So CCEC members, you should have those in your email. Rest of council, I will be getting them out to you ASAP. Please reach out to us. I will also send a link to Kara's presentation and this recording if you'd like that as well. So I wanted to give everybody that. And as you, as you send them in, we'll, we'll start looking, analyzing them and seeing what we can do. So thank you so very much.
I should probably have my mic on. Thank you, Karen. And as shared, that will be emailed later for you all to re-review. That takes us into our last agenda item, which is number five, Legislative File 78125, and future agenda items. I know that I had a document that had some dates. Okay. Yes. Trying to think offhand. We committed to Ajuhenya Highland Granados from YWCA Madison coming back and giving a summary of the council retreat that was held and kind of next steps in terms of incorporating restorative justice as a practice and policymaking. We've had a request from Alder Martinez Rutherford that I believe we have trying to combine a CARES presentation and also a presentation from the detective that works within human trafficking with Madison Police Department. And then also it may be a council, common council update and not CCEC, but an update on how the Winnebago transportation contract is going for MPD. Now officers are no longer transporting there. And I can't read that. Oh, that's a nice list. All right, from the list that Karen is showing of items that either the body or members of the common council have asked us to address, is there any prioritization or any items that stick out to Alders to prioritize for our upcoming CCEC? Be able to zone in a little bit. It's readable. So we had our social media pilots update already. Kara came and provided the performance excellence. We'll have CARES, YWCA, and possibly MPD at our next meeting on the 17th. Vice President Figaro Cole.
So I would like to add the transport presentation, please. I don't see it there.
Winnebago transport.
Winnebago transport presentation from John to, to share what the outcome of the pilot was.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Vitterver?
Yeah, well, I was just thinking that the CARES and the transport, those are relevant to the budget. So I would request that those be at the, both be at the 1017 meeting if possible. And perhaps, I know we're getting ways from the retreat, but that's less time sensitive.
Thank you. Have that recorded. Alder Vitterver. Alder Bennett.
Yes, this doesn't have to be at the 1017 meeting, but given the last council meeting, there's a long discussion about the length of our meetings, can we add an agenda item to discuss like reducing lengths of our, our council meetings?
Yes, got that. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Okay, yeah. Attorney House just reminded that some of the topics that we've added maybe before other BCCs, like the Public Safety Review Committee, for instance. So we'll do a double check there, but we have those all recorded. And Alder Evers?
Yeah, thank you, President. I just have the opinion that this committee is supposed to deal with administrative issues and not necessarily concept ideas, agenda topics for the greater body to work on. So I think administrative focus on things like the length of our meetings, the size of the council, Alder pay, all those kinds of things is really, you know, four square with what we should be doing. I'm, I'm not a big fan of taking up broader topics that if we feel are important, should involve a presentation to the entire body. But I don't see any role for this administrative body to get into something like the Winnebago item or something like that. That is something that we can request a report for the broader body. That's my humble opinion.
Appreciate your perspective, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to add Alder pay. If we're going to be talking about reducing the size of the council, I think Alder pay should be right up there with that as well, please.
Yeah, remember when Alder Vitterver added that to our list, I believe, last meeting? It wasn't in direct correlation with the conversations we had had about the ordinance change that needs to happen in order for the pay to occur. So thank you for that reminder. All right. That is a pretty good list for now, and thank you for adding the priority items. As always, if there are more items, please reach out to myself or to Karen. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
All right, motion seconds. I'm going to assume unanimous consent and say that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you all.